Turn it over to Superintendent Moore for her comments.
Good evening. It was my privilege last week to announce Teri Hennings, a civic literacy and African-American studies teacher at Gardner-Magnan High School, as the 2023 WCPSS Teacher of the Year. Hennings chose teaching as a second career after serving in the United States Air Force for 25 years. He has taught at Gardner-Magnan High School since 2017. Hennings says of his instructional style, "My time in the U.S. Air Force has provided me a unique opportunity to insert my own experiences and include personal culturally relevant experiences. Once students discover the personal connection I have with their culture, race, or ethnicity, it increases the opportunity for meaningful bonds to form. My relationship with my students is the foundation upon which everything else rests." Hennings is the faculty advisor to Garner High's Black Student Union Club and serves on the superintendent's Teacher Advisory Council. He has also served on the school's equity team and as a civic literacy professional learning community leader. As Teacher of the Year, Hennings will participate in the Go Global North Carolina International Study Program in South Korea next summer. He will also have the use of a 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe from Capital Chevrolet for the next year, in addition to many other prizes donated by community sponsors. In a district with thousands of talented and hard-working teachers, being named Teacher of the Year is a rarefied honor. My most sincere congratulations and thanks to Mr. Hennings, as well as all of this year's finalists and semifinalists for your commitment to teaching excellence. Nine WCPSS students are among the 840 winners of the first round of 2023 National Merit Scholarships. In this first of four rounds of the prestigious scholarship program, corporate sponsors provide National Merit Scholarships for finalists who are children of their employees, who are residents of the communities that the company serves, or who plan to pursue college majors or careers the sponsor wishes to encourage. Most of these awards are renewable for up to four years of college undergraduate study and provide annual stipends that range from $1,000 to $10,000 per year. Congratulations to all of these winners who are listed on our Facebook page. Congratulations to Green Level High School senior Deneen Khan for being named the 2023 Rachel Rivers Coffee High School Journalist of the Year by the North Carolina Scholastic Media Association. Khan is co-editor of the Green Level High School newspaper, The Gator's Eye. Judges emphasized the strength of Khan's writing across different platforms, as well as her leadership of an engaged newsroom. One judge wrote, "Deneen displayed an impressive variety of writing in her portfolio, handling news, feature, and opinion well, showing that she has mastered many types of journalistic writing." Khan will receive a $3,000 scholarship. Olivia Metello of Enlow-Magnan High School received an honorable mention and will receive a $1,000 scholarship. The winners' journalism programs will also receive a cash award, with Green Level receiving $500 and Enlow receiving $250. Our mission as a district is to prepare students well for college and career. With the support of teachers and advisors, these students are demonstrating talent and initiative, gaining invaluable experience that will serve them well in any career path. Congratulations again to Deneen and Olivia. And finally, I'd like to invite our young learners and their families to participate in Letterland Days coming up on May 15 through May 21. Letterland is a fun and effective phonics program that uses engaging characters to help students learn the alphabet, basic spelling, and other literacy skills. Families can visit Letterland characters at various locations around Raleigh starting May 15. Some will have prepackaged activities that families can take home. Most events will be at Poole and Park, which is open daily from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Check to see where your favorite Letterland characters will be by visiting wcpss.net/letterland. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore, and of course, congratulations to Mr. Hennings. And congratulations to those students who were accepted into our future teachers program. We are very excited to meet you later this month and get to know you, and thank you for choosing this profession. This past Friday, the board heard the leadership profile that community members and staff feedback helped us create. We are now reviewing our 28 applications. We did build some flexibility into this timeline, and I just want to let the public know that we will be meeting in closed session to choose first-round interviewees and to determine interview questions now on Wednesday, May 10. That will be updated on our superintendent's search webpage, as well as access to that community leadership profile, and that is wcpss.net/super-search. On Saturday, Ms. Johnson-Hossler and I attended the PTA Reflection Ceremony. It was wonderful to see our students and their families, to see recordings of their dances, some of their photography and drawings, and hear from our students who had prizes in the literature category. Many, many thanks to our parent-teacher associations and PTSAs throughout Wake County, the Wake PTA Council, especially our Reflection Chair Sandra Fogelman and President Teresa Jones, as well as to the Farmington Woods community for hosting this event. And last night, the PTSAs of Apex Friendship High School, Middle School, and Elementary School met to learn about school safety from our Senior Director of Security and the School Resource Officer. And I'd like to thank the PTAs, as well as Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Pittman, and Dr. Gamble for being available to answer questions from an administrator's standpoint. Those are all that I have. Hand it over to Vice Chair Hagerty.
Thank you, Chairman Haffey. Let me start with, "Let's go Canes! We're into Round Two!" And I see some more of my colleagues have joined me, knowing that in playoff hockey season, there are no ties. There are no ties during the playoffs. So, thank you for that support of solidarity. We'll come back to that one. I'm pleased to announce we have our last District 7 BAC meeting is coming up next Monday, May 8, at Sycamore Creek Elementary School, and it will be on the important topic of Internet safety. We were fortunate enough to get an Assistant Attorney General from the North Carolina Department of Justice, who's going to talk about what parents need to know about Internet safety, perhaps some self-defense strategies, and some things that the department is looking at in terms of how it is trying to help keep all of our kids safe. So, again, that's Monday at Sycamore Creek Elementary School. Couple of things to bring up. Yesterday, if any of you were watching, Wake County Commissioners rolled out the county manager's budget, recommended budget. And again, the Wake County government pays for a number of important human services around the county, EMS service, they provide for our libraries, behavioral health, and medicine, and of course, they supplement public education. There is one area, though, outside of education that they brought up that I did want to talk about because I think it's important. If you remember, I think at a previous meeting, Mr. Swanson had talked about a great nonprofit, Youth Villages, and the work they do around foster care. And I know with a lot of the other topics in our community, sometimes issues like foster care don't get the attention they deserve. One of the key points that was brought up last night was that in Wake County in 2019, we had about 200 foster families. And by 2023, that number has fallen to 90. 90 children out there in need of, you know, a caring, loving, safe place. Again, the ultimate goal with foster care is reunification with their parents. Sometimes, conditions make that where that is not possible. We have children aging out of the system, going into the world without that mentor, that safe place. If you have the capacity to be a foster parent, or if you know someone who does and you'd like to learn more, please go to wake.gov/foster and learn more about the foster care program. Another thing that came up at the end of our meeting, you might have heard that we announced the settlement with Juul. $6.2 million settlement. We'll see how much of that we actually receive. But this is specifically for the impacts of vaping in our school community and our youth. And I think some of this really came to light just this week, where we saw events at one of our high schools where they've had to actually shut down bathrooms because the extent of the vaping was setting off the smoke alarms. And this is not new. This has been happening at this school, and I know the school has tried many different solutions. But the addictive nature of the vape is that even with increased enforcement, even with additional monitoring, even with holding children accountable for the, you know, the false alarms to the fire department, and all of those calls with our first responders, the incidence of vaping just continued to rise. And so, you know, we will be doing more as the settlement funds come in to look at what we can do as a school system to really try to cut down and curb youth vaping. But this is a good opportunity. You know, Ms. Caulfield had brought up just the proximity of vaping shops to a lot of our schools. There's one within walking distance of Leesville Road High School that students can easily access. You know, it's going to take more than just the schools. It's going to take our community. It's going to take a look. We're going to have to look at the availability of these products and devices. But the most important thing is if you haven't done it yet, have this conversation at home with your students. Like so many of these issues, the conversations about student behavior have to begin at home. And oftentimes, if the only information they're getting is through advertising, through things on the Internet, through peer pressure, they're not going to get the whole story. You know, if you can convey just the real gravity and the health risks involved, you know, these ain't Grandma's cigarettes, right? You know, one vape pod has the nicotine of what, one, two packs of cigarettes? I have to keep checking because it just keeps going up and up. And the health impacts on a whole generation are at risk. So, really, please, don't take for granted that your kids know better. Have the conversation with them about vaping, about the health risks, and about the responsibilities that they're taking on by vaping in our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hagerty. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Chairman Haffey. This is a great week to celebrate our teachers and principals. Thank you for all you do for our students. And Mr. Hershey, if I may, I'd like to say a special thanks to the incredible PK team at Brentwood Elementary and the 7th grade team at Carroll Middle, where my children receive great academic enrichment, and so very proud of all the work that goes on throughout the district. And I would like to talk about Teacher of the Year. This is one of the most special events each year. It was incredible to be in the room with so many incredible educators. I even saw one of my son's favorite teachers, Ms. Perry Sanders of Lynn Road, and again, Mr. Hershey in your district. So, I was so excited also to see Mr. Hennings and thankful for his service. It's just so incredible to see his passion for his students, and just the joy that was seen when we looked at the videos. And so, so excited for him and thankful for the work that he has done. And I also want to acknowledge, we had a retirement last week. Stacy Weddle, who opened Riverbend Middle School, retired last Friday. She's left a legacy of serving our students very well, and I'm so excited about her next chapter, and I hope we'll get a chance to work together in some capacity in the future. And last week was really a busy week. The Boys and Girls Club luncheon last Friday was another opportunity to see our excellent students and to really learn about all the things that they do in the community. The Boys and Girls Club is a great partner organization. They really build so many leadership skills for our students and give them the opportunities to highlight and showcase all that they have done. And so, so honored to be able to be a part of that event last week. And I'd like to thank Ms. Johnson-Hossler for the opportunity for my first time attending the North Carolina Foundation for Public School Children's Champions for Children's Gala. This was a really nice event. And one of the most special things also, Ms. Johnson-Hossler made sure I saw my high school librarian, Ms. Linda Gill, Class of '96 from Milbrook High School. So, that was a very sweet reunion, and so I appreciated that great opportunity. And lastly, I want to close with the District 4 BAC meeting. It will be on May 15, and that will be at Southeast Raleigh Elementary School. And I hope everybody will come out. It's at 6:00 o'clock. We're going to lift up Equity and have some great discussion and also get an update on the superintendent's search. So, if you're able to join us, we would love to have you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds.
Thank you. I join everyone, all of my colleagues, in congratulating Wake County's Teacher of the Year, Mr. Hennings. It was an absolute pleasure to be among so many of our top educators last week at the awards ceremony. I want to thank all of them and all the staff that worked to make that event so special for these educators. A shout-out to Athens Drive High School for winning the Gold Crown Award for a high-school print yearbook from the Columbia Scholastic Press Association. Athens won the Silver Crown Award some months ago and advanced to compete for the Gold Crown, which they won about a month ago. This is the first ever such award for a WCPSS school and the first in five years from any school in North Carolina. This is among the nation's highest awards for scholastic journalism. So, well-done students and staff of the Athens Drive Torch. That's the name of their yearbook. Finally, I want to remind everyone to please pay attention to what's going on at the legislature. There are many education-related bills moving quickly through both chambers. Public schools and public school districts need your support and your advocacy. There are too many bills to mention, but I would know that any of us here on the board would be happy to talk with you about what concerns us and what would help us. So, please reach out to your board member, be aware of what's going on, and contact your House and Senate members in the General Assembly and help us advocate for funding and policies that support our school district and the public school districts around the state. Thank you.
Dr. Eng?
Good evening. And I want to echo the congratulations to Mr. Hennings. One of the things that I just was impressed with is that he served the country first, and then his second career was teaching and doing a remarkable job at it. So, congratulations to him. And just so you'll know, that all the finalists of Teacher of the Year, they're truly servant leaders. In this past weekend, I went to a spring carnival at Brooks Avenue Church of Christ for kids with special needs. And lo and behold, Mr. Ross Anderson was there. He was volunteering. And so, I was really, you know, just very impressed with the fact that, you know, not only does he serve in the classroom, but he also serves in the community. And I just want to second what Mr. Hagerty was talking about in terms of vaping, just from a medical standpoint. I just remember the time when vaping was such a big burgeoning industry, and right before COVID. And I remember being, working in the hospital, that there were many cases of people being hospitalized at a very young age in the intensive care unit with severe, severe respiratory problems, where their lungs are filled up with fluid and they're on the ventilator. And, you know, right about that time, there was some research coming around, coming out saying the damage of vaping, specifically the additives to the vaping inside, and people were concerned about that. But unfortunately, you know, COVID, the pandemic happened, and all that kind of was pushed aside for a number of years. So, I'm glad that this thing with Juul has come along so that we can highlight that the detrimental effects of vaping on our young people. And finally, I don't usually do this, but this, May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. I don't usually do this, but... Oh, okay. Well. But seriously, I mean, I, you know, being a part of that community, I just wanted to have a, highlight the fact that, you know, AAPI is a shortcut term. And really, there are so many different cultures within this community. There's Chinese, there's Japanese, Koreans, Vietnamese, Indians. And all of them are rich, rich cultures that have unique perspectives. And, you know, it's easy to just kind of group everybody together, but I just want everybody to appreciate the fact that all these cultures are unique, with a very rich history, very rich cultures, and just, you know, to be appreciative of that and understanding of the difference, even within the AAPI community. So, I just want to recognize that this month and, you know, the achievements of all the people that have through hundreds and thousands of years in the Chinese culture. But, you know, the thing that I came up, that, you know, was in my heart as a Chinese American is the importance of hard work, the importance of studying, the importance of an education. Back in China, there are these quote-unquote judges, and it was a very important position, very distinguished position. And people work very hard and go through a number of years of school to achieve that position. And so, you know, that, I think, that kind of heritage has come along and continued on in my background. So, that's why I take so much, put so much importance in the good quality education, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Eng didn't note, but has noted prior, that you are the first Asian American or Pacific, Asian American to serve on this board. Mr. Hershey?
Congratulations on that. Should be proud. Thank you, Madam Chair. Reminder that our final BAC is at Stowe on May 15 at noon. I want to thank them for agreeing to host. Did that go out? Did my mic go out? Try that again. Yeah. I want to congratulate the Broughton baseball team on their first outright CAP-6 conference championship since 1991. I want to congratulate the Douglas Elementary School's 2nd graders for their cool weather-related themed dances that I went to last week. And then, finally, I would like to apologize first to the LGBTQ community. We have received emails. I meant to acknowledge that last week, and I just want to say that I stand with you. I am concerned about bills coming out of the General Assembly on all issues related, and that, you know, I reject bullying in all forms. And, you know, we don't want to see it in our schools at all or from anyone else about our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Caulfield?
Thank you. Okay. I want to second, third, and fourth, the congratulations to Teri Hennings for winning Teacher of the Year, and to all those teachers that are out there that do so much for our children. I want to give a shout-out to our Sarah Freeman in District 1 at Wake Forest High School, and Joshua Shepherd of Neuse River Middle School, also of District 1, that were recognized also as runner-ups there. They were recognized for their great work, and I appreciate all that our teachers do. Wake Forest High School had the Sound of Music, and I also got to, I got to see the Sound of Music at Wake Forest High School, and also Mean Girls at Heritage High School. So, although we have a busy schedule going on, I was able to squeeze those two things in there. I just can't believe the talent that comes out of our children. It really is pretty incredible to see the Broadway-like performance that they put up there. And their energy that they have up there and their confidence is, it's just really, it's incredible. It's incredible to watch that. I know when I was in middle school and high school, you would have never got me on that stage. But they do it, and they do it with just pure enjoyment, and they really are very talented. So, not only do we get to enjoy their talents, but we also get to see their resilience, their teamwork, their problem-solving. Because if you've ever been backstage, you know what it is like, how hectic and crazy, energetic, and just complete chaos back there, as they put it together and show up on stage looking like it just naturally happened. Also, the confidence that they put out there. It's, I think, for Wake Forest High School, the Sound of Music, it was just incredible to see their tech team came out and just built this crazy elaborate stage. And every time the scene changed, they would roll it around and piece it all together and then disappear like poof, like it never happened. And it was just, it was really incredible to see how much work they put into it, and it really looked amazing. And the same thing with Mean Girls. They just, they perform and do all this work. So, I thank all the parents, all the staff, and everybody that helps put all of that stuff together. It's important to recognize also their relationships that they build and how much that encourages all them around them, which leads me to May is Mental Awareness Month. It's important for us to realize that the relationships be recognized and how important that is to our kids and our students, not only just with their friend groups, with every class and everything that they have, all the kids that are around them. A lot of these children, especially our teenagers, need that encouragement, and they may feel like they're not understood or they're alone. But I want to encourage folks to reach out. You are not alone, and there are probably way more of you than you really will understand that feel exactly the same way you are. So, please, reach out. Thank you to Mr. Wing for recognizing that about the vapes, and Mr. Hagerty also to recognize how important it is to be a community with all these things. I think that is a very key and important factor. Have the conversation with your children. Have it once, have it twice, have it many times. So, there is no information that you will give to your children that will not be helpful. And even if they don't listen once, twice, if they hear it enough, they will just think twice before they do something like that. And it could affect their health. It could affect their well-being. It could affect everything. So, have the conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Chairman Haffey. And yesterday, I want to start by saying Happy National Principal Appreciation Day was yesterday, and I just want to acknowledge and give a shout-out to all the amazing leaders that we have in our schools that are doing the work every day to ensuring that our students feel safe, seen, and heard in their schools. And also, congratulations to our Teacher of the Year and to all those teachers that, you know, were recognized, and those teachers that were not recognized, who are doing the work without little to no compensation from our state legislator as we go into theirs. So, I think Mr. Hershey started the conversation, so I'm going to piggyback with you. So, I know that we are fortunate for those, for our teachers. And as we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week next week, I hope that all parents and teachers and students, you know, celebrate your teachers, because not every superhero wears capes. They have pins and juggling many things and grading many papers and ensuring that you are meeting the goals and the needs or whatnot. So, May 15, many legislators will be, it's Bring Your Legislature to School Day, as they will be touring our schools. And I hope that as they are touring our schools, they are seeing the needs that our schools are facing. And I hope that folks will be having those conversations about compensation and about retention. And I know that when I tour with my state senator, I will be sharing these same concerns, and I'm encouraging others to do the same and to see what's happening in our classrooms, because the magic happens in the classroom with little to no resources. So, I'm hoping that they will be able to take some of those things back to Jones Street, so we're not constantly going to the county commissioners to put further pressure on our constituents and on this county to do what is best by fully funding our schools when our General Assembly is sitting on a billion-dollar surplus. So, the state has to do more as we vote tonight on our budget. I will give you a little sneak preview of my comment, but I'll save the rest for that time when it's more appropriate. But the state has to do more. The state has to mandate their responsibility. That is indicated in their state constitution, which they all have sworn to uphold. So, with that being said, I will be, I'm looking forward tomorrow to go into whether... So with that being said, I will be, I'm looking forward tomorrow to going to Weatherstone Elementary School as I'm wrapping up my District Nine tours. So I'm grateful for Dr. Sexton to setting these up and looking forward to getting to the other schools in Apex and Morrisville. And so that concludes my remarks. Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Ms. Johnson-Hussler, take us home.
Thank you very much. I will certainly be able to eliminate some of my comments. One was about vaping in our schools. I had one high school teacher tell me that it feels like they're going to recess because they are being called out of class constantly with the number of fire alarms happening. And I know it's a very bold move to make that kind of change in one of your high schools. So, but I think we're at a place where we are all going to have to make really hard decisions and very bold moves to address the impact that vaping has. While, while it's not our grandmother, as I think about my mother, who went to high school when you could actually smoke on a campus because they didn't understand the effects of tobacco. And again, I'm in North Carolina, born and raised, so of course, we live in the South. So I see somebody always like, yes, I remember when they could smoke in schools. And the other piece that, and perhaps we can bring some of our students back in. When this was brought to me literally in 2013 by a group of 14-year-old students, I had no idea, and apparently neither did a couple of principals, that some of those vape pens are so small that parents don't know where they are. So in addition to talking to your kids, I also strongly recommend speaking as a high school parent as well is that you also have conversations about when they see something, say something. Oftentimes, parents talk to their kids and don't know what's happening. And so one of the pieces of good friendship is also taking care of your friends, which I also consider a part of how we do mental health work is. So I tell my daughter all the time, yes, I know all of the rhymes about snitches. But I also know what it means to be a good friend. And that really shows up when your friends that are your friends at 17 will still be around by keeping them healthy and safe. And so, and that's what certainly a lot of the work that I've learned from the young people who have really brought to light the impact of vaping in our schools. And I'd be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge from the work that a lot of our youth councils and post-center does as well around vaping is, yes, there is certainly nicotine in those vape pens, but there are also other substances that our students are having access to in those vape pens. So the conversation has to be much broader than the impact of nicotine that some of our students are having access to in their vape pens. And sadly enough, that is where we are in this day and age. And to that end, in having conversations with a group of young people over the weekend, one of the things that they also recommended I talk about is talking to parents about taking things, snacks, from their friends because we also are seeing an increase of gummies laced in our schools and being given out as regular gummies. So my young people always keep me in the know and remind me what I should talk about at the table. So another thing for parents to bring to the forefront in discussions with our young people. So now I feel like I'm telling my daughter a list of things as she leaves the house. And I was like, don't forget, get your own Scooby snacks out of the cabinet. Because that's our little running joke. Because again, those of you who have heard me a long time know I believe in the strength-based approach. Scaring our kids has never created change. What has created change is ensuring that they have the knowledge and information to what the truth is and the impacts on their own livelihood. And so trusting our young people enough to give them the correct information is invaluable, especially in these instances. So whether it's humor that you use or other information, I certainly would echo my colleagues and parents talking to our young people about all of these things. And also helping them figure out how to talk to their peers. Because sometimes our best advocate are our peer advocates. So that's another addition I would add to that. Again, always a highlight to see our young people. Ms. Haffey knows I love, love little kids. Like she knows her little kid is not a little kid anymore. She is grown up. But so we got to see a lot of little kids at the PTA. One little girl, I think she may have been kindergarten or first grade. So we really think she should read her poem to the entire district. Because she talked very openly about differences and what it means and how we still work together as a community out of this little tiny five or six-year-old with cute little pigtails. And so again, out of the mouths of babes, really speaking for me, truth to power around how adults can learn from our young kids. And so again, a lot of amazing talent in our district, as you can imagine. But that, I think it might have been the first poem we heard really still stands out from the work that our kids are doing. And also acknowledging that they see the way that adults are behaving and are speaking to it in their own artwork in the ways in which we tell them to behave as children they're emulating. We should also do the same as adults. And trust me, she articulated it far better than I am as a little five or six-year-old. The last thing that I will say is, you know, when I think about Mr. Henning, and again, without a shadow of a doubt, you all know he represents Garner in District Two. And so we are extremely excited. But one of the things that he said to me first, besides he really did not believe that they were giving him a Tahoe. But he also talked about the number of teachers who don't have the time, energy, or space to put forth what it takes to even apply for Teacher of the Year. And I've always known that, especially when I started as chair, and you get to read the portfolios and see how much extra work goes into even applying for any of these awards. And so it's just a reminder that certainly I felt like he was saying to me that he was accepting this not just on behalf of himself, but for all the teachers who don't have the extra time, who are doing the same great work in their buildings. And again, that's always a sign to me that the right person was chosen, when that they can be gracious with their own award and acknowledging that his PSA students can also see a reflection of themselves in him. And we also decided that he should get a parking spot at the top of the student parking lot when he rolls out of his black Tahoe so he can really floss in front of the kids. But again, just for me, I wanted to express not only my appreciation for the work that everybody in the district does to make it happen, but also acknowledging that not all of our teachers have the time, resources, and energy to submit these awards, to submit to be a part of the awards. And so to have an award winner representing our district truly reminds me of the goodness that we have in all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Hussler. And I will add that I did forget to mention that it is also Jewish-American History Month. We know that attacks on our LGBTQ community are up and acts of antisemitism are reported even higher than that. It's not that attacks went down on our LGBTQ kids, it's just that antisemitic acts went up. So let's all take a moment and recognize that we can all, you know, in our hearts, treat people the way that they want to be treated and that words have power to lift people up and also to hurt people. At this point, it is time to get a motion to approve our meeting agenda.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, nay? All right. Motion passes. We now move on to public comment. Speakers commenting on items on tonight's agenda will be heard before speakers commenting on other topics. Those speakers will be heard in order of sign up. If the public comment portion of the agenda exceeds 30 minutes, Board Policy states that the chair reserves the right to conduct other board business before inviting the remaining speakers to the podium. Members of the public are welcome to offer comments or criticism dedicated at substantive ideas, actions, or procedures of the board and individual board members. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel and individual student matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Those offering comments to the board, including students, may discuss issues and matters of general concern. Concerns related to personnel issues or student matters may be addressed through applicable WCPSS personnel, the grievance policy, or other applicable policies. During public comment, you may speak for up to three minutes. A green light will illuminate at the podium when you, when you begin. A yellow light will light up along with an audio tone when there are 30 seconds remaining in your time. And a red light, along with an audible tone, will signal when your time is up. And it will be time for the next speaker to be called to the podium. In the interest of maintaining civility and decorum, however, speakers are encouraged to address their comments to the Board of Education and to refrain from personal attacks and insults directed at the board, individual board members, staff, or members of the general public. Please remain at the podium during your speaking time, and any materials you wish to share with the board should be handed to the board attorney either before or after your comments. Mr. Bloomberg is right there for your convenience. And also, if you need to adjust the microphones, please do so. We have five speakers on agenda and four off. We begin with on-agenda topics. Our first speaker is Dwayne Hanson and will be followed by Mary Richardson.
I'll pass him as speaker.
Okay. Mary Richardson, followed by Amy Marshall.
Good evening, Board. My name is Mary Richardson and I live in Holly Springs. And I find it difficult to speak to this budget as there's no line item budget available anywhere on the website to look at. With that in mind, I'll start by saying that $650,094,842 is mind-boggling. Million dollars, $650 million. There seems to be a lot of waste in the budget. Overcompensated administrators, when, when the teachers are the ones that need the increase in wages. Maybe administrative wages could be cut and move those dollars to the teacher salaries or classroom supplies so teachers are not spending their hard-earned dollars for the supplies needed to teach our children. Suppose you dissolve the Office of Equity and Affairs and move that budgeted money elsewhere. Based on an article in the North State Journal in January of '22, the Office of Equity Affairs budget to date was over $8 million. And this office was formed in 2014 with a budget of $250,000. And that budget grew to a high of $1,631,000 during the 2019-20 school year. Various initiatives such as equity coaching, cultural proficiency training, and equitable discipline practices are displayed on the website. However, there are no metrics or measures of accountability related to the effectiveness of the OEA's endeavors. How about move that million-dollar budget to new quality curriculum that will help our students learn the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic? Because based on test scores, Wake County students are falling farther and farther behind. And my biggest concern is in the final statements on your online budget review. This will support the critical work happening under the essential pillars of high-quality instructional core. If you had a high-quality instructional core, the students would not be falling or failing the end-of-year exams. Equity-focused practices? You're spending too much of our tax dollars on your equity practices and not focusing on the students' learning. That's all I have to say.
Our next speaker is Amy Marshall, followed by Daniel Grant King.
Hello. I'm Amy Marshall, president and founder of the New Educator Association Carolina Teachers Alliance at carolinateachers.org. We have a growing school staff membership in North and South Carolina. Our vision is an unbiased and academically sound education for all kids. I'm here today first regarding the budget to thank the board for reinstating master's pay that will go into effect July 1st. You made the right decision to help retain and attract high-quality teachers. The second reason I'm here tonight is about Senate Bill 579 titled Prevent Harm to Children that was unanimously approved by the bipartisan North Carolina Senate yesterday. This bill increases the penalty for showing obscene materials to kids from a Class I felony to a Class H felony, where obscenity falls under the North Carolina's Obscenity Law, General Statute 14-190.1. Class H felony convictions carry jail terms from four to 25 months. The law goes into effect after December 1st, on December 1st. Wake County Public Schools retains many books with content meeting the North Carolina statute description of obscenity. My question for the board tonight is, why not act now to remove the obscene materials from WCPSS libraries? I have here just one of many examples retained by the district. These are sexually explicit images of graphic oral sex between males, and it is from the co-Bobby book, Gender Queer. This book with these pornographic images is still available to 13- and 14-year-olds at three Wake County high schools, Broughton, Knightdale, and Panther Creek. I would ask each board member to go on public record stating whether you support retaining this particular book that violates the North Carolina Obscenity Statute in light of yesterday's unanimous Senate vote. Librarian Julie Stiver spoke here recently claiming only a small percentage of parents want obscene books removed. Yesterday's unanimous Senate vote shows it's no small number. As you view these images from a book remaining in your schools, and I'll hand this to Attorney Bloomberg when I'm done, would you proudly show this to your children? If you answered no, then please stop the showing of this obscenity to our children. This book has no educational value and is harming kids. So on behalf of our Carolina Teachers Alliance membership here and beyond, I ask you to make the right decision and direct your school principals to remove the obscene books like this one before SB 579 takes effect. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Grant King. Is he here this evening? No? All right. Christina Spears, followed by May Mitchell.
Good evening, Chairman Haffey, Vice Chair Hagerty, and board members. Hello, Superintendent Moore and district staff. I'm Christina Spears, Wake NCAE president. It is the height of spring in public schools. I want to start by thanking you all for your diligence. Public school workers are tired, but I know you're tired too, in the middle of the budget process and the superintendent search. I want to start again by appreciating Superintendent Moore's clear reminder last week to the board about its role in the budget process, saying the board's role is to communicate the needs of the district to the county commission, and that role is clearly articulated on our public-facing website. So I'm here asking you to articulate those needs in our final budget proposal to our county commissioners. And earlier today, Ms. Edmonds referenced community comments on the budget, saying some believe it's adequate while others do not. And I encourage you to ask yourselves when you vote tonight, who is harmed or impacted by an inadequate budget? As you've heard at this podium and in the last two meetings, our classified staff are directly impacted when they are not compensated a living wage. When our non-instructional staff, that's our instructional assistants, bus drivers, child nutrition workers, safety assistants are impacted, our students are impacted too. Ms. Caulfield, I appreciated you pointing to student achievement in connection to this budget proposal. Public school professionals, both certified and classified, know that when workers are overworked and overpaid, we cannot adequately meet the social and academic needs of our students, ultimately impacting student achievement. Not only are we asking you to articulate our needs through this budget proposal, we are asking you to lead. We are asking you to be bold with your leadership and with your vote tonight by doing what you know is right for public school workers and our students, proposing a budget to the commissioners that provides the compensation and school facilities we need and deserve. If you can show public school workers that you are responsive to our needs, in this case being clear that $17 an hour is not enough and we need to move closer to an hourly wage that is comparable or the same as other county employees, you can galvanize us workers to come out and support your budget at the county commission in the coming weeks. If you demonstrate that responsiveness tonight with your leadership and your votes, we are looking forward to fighting together with you, alongside you, and our community allies to win a fully funded budget increase from our county commissioners. And rest assured, Wake NCAE and folks who love our Wake County Public Schools will be using our power and our voices at the upcoming budget hearings in the coming weeks at the county commission. I hope folks will join us on May 15th for the public hearing and a rally beforehand. But for now, for tonight, it's your duty to respond to the needs of public school workers and constituents, listening to public comments and stories from this podium, reading electronic feedback, and considering the material impacts on people's lives by promoting a budget, proposing a budget, passing a budget that adequately meets our needs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is May Mitchell, followed by Donna Lubus.
My name is May Mitchell. I am a parent to children in the Wake County Public School system. I know- I know that in the last board meeting, there was a group of very vocal parents demanding to ban books. I'd like to voice a counter response and support for both the staff of our public schools and our diverse student body and their experiences. I have printed handouts for Board members on the statistics of banned books collected by the American Library Association. This is the highest number of attempted book bans since the ALA began compiling data about censorship in libraries more than 20 years ago. According to the ALA president, the unprecedented number of challenges we're seeing already this year reflects coordinated national efforts to silence marginalized or historically underrepresented voices and deprive all of us, young people in particular, of the chance to explore a world beyond the confines of our personal experience. My mother's family fled from mainland China to Taiwan because of the Cultural Revolution. I grew up with the knowledge that censoring books and only allowing certain ideas to be discussed within public settings, especially the classroom, is a form of authoritarianism. These book bans are rooted in white supremacy and homophobia. Organizations with a political agenda are spreading lists of books they don't like. Efforts to censor entire categories of books reflecting certain voices and views show that the moral panic isn't about kids, it's about politics. By restricting information and discouraging freedom of thought, censorship undermines one of the primary functions of education, teaching students how to think for themselves. Such actions assert free speech proponents, endanger tolerance, free expression, and democracy. We are not living in a system of individualism. No matter how much our society would like to convince us, the reality is that we're all interdependent, that our experiences impact one another. And books are tools for us to understand each other's realities. Reading expands our ideas and thoughts. They do not merely reinforce what we wish to be true. Books inspire us to engage in and debate and exchange of ideas, but too many of those advocating for book bans would rather censor the freedom of thought. I understand parents' wishes to protect their children. I share that wish. However, banning books that contain ideas that scare us is a weak response. And I encourage you all to trust the professionals that have been hired to educate our diverse body, that listening to someone else's story will encourage empathy and humanity, which is a value we all share. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia, or sorry, Donna Lubis, followed by Patricia Robiso.
I never planned to come back here, but evidently I have a following, so people are listening to what I'm saying. I'm a teacher of many, many years, 30 years in Wake County, and I wear this T-shirt because I was a teacher of the year at one point. I need to address two things I didn't plan to say. I need to address, and I'm not prepared for this, but when I think oftentimes when we talk about book banning, people think we're taking knowledge away. I think most people, when they're talking about book banning, they're talking about banning pornography that children are seeing, like the lady was just talking about. Things that are not, children should not be seeing. I think that's the book banning they're talking about. Book banning isn't the term that should be used. Okay, well, let me get on to what I was going to be talking about. Since talking last time, the last time I was here, I've been taking time to speak to colleagues that are still in the field, that are still in the schools teaching, and asking them things like, what differences would I see if I came back to school now? What would be different? And I kept hearing the same things over and over again. It was an obvious pattern. The biggest thing seemed to be lack of discipline. There's the children, there's people, I had even teacher assistants saying to me, if I discipline a child in the cafeteria for throwing food and all that, I have no backup for disciplining the child. And the other thing is the administration does not do anything. If you have unruly children in your classroom, you cannot teach them. They need to be listening to you, like you are. If you all turned to each other and started talking and I just tried to talk over you, you're not internalizing what I'm saying. But discipline over and over again. The other thing, these are a few comments that some teachers have made to me. When they have to teach something that is uncomfortable to them, they ignore it. They don't do it. An example would be CRT. They find that they don't want to instill any more hate and division amongst the children in their room, and they just ignore these things. Oh, boy, really? Okay, that went fast. I found out today, just sitting there, do you know how much you pay for each child in Wake County Public Schools? $11,846 a child, and you still need more money? That is insane. And another thing I'd like to just bring up because I got off track, mental health days. What are they? Mental health days, do kids stay home from school? And no academic instruction. Wow, I don't get it. Don't get it.
Our next speaker is Patricia Robiso, followed by Donald Dembling. Ms. Robiso?
My name is Patricia Robinson, and I am from Raleigh. That's okay.
My apologies, it was cut off. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, that's okay. I've spent the last 35 years as a teacher, 20 years in public school, and 15 years in private school. And I've spent my life supporting students, teachers, administrators, Board members like you, and all of the staff that provides our children with the education that they need. I'm here tonight to bring my support to solving the pressing issue of school safety. We are in a crisis right now, all around us, all over our country, and I've never been in a place like this before. I've never felt the fear that I feel when our children get on a bus and go to school or enter an elementary school or a middle school or a high school. Just last week, Middle Creek had a code red, and in that school was my granddaughter. And I don't know how we're going to solve this huge problem of school safety. I know it involves more than just putting machines up to scan weapons as they come into the building, but in Middle Creek, there was a gun in the building. And it was another student who reported that that gun was there. That can be prevented. It's prevented as I enter an airport. It's prevented as I enter the buildings in Raleigh. And it can be prevented in our schools. Right now, I've learned that Johnston County has machines that it's free flowing. You can just pass them. And it doesn't just pick up metal detecting, it picks up an image. So it doesn't stop people with a watch or whatever that's metal. It actually will stop someone with a weapon, a knife, a gun, whatever. And I don't know how we're going to get the money. Mr. Swanson was talking about this money that we have, that the state has. I don't know what to do on one person right now, but I want to do something, and I want to do it urgently because I can feel it. It's not far away now, and I want us to stop it before it happens. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Donald Dembling.
Good evening. My name is Donald Dembling. I'm a resident of Raleigh. And Pat just said everything I wanted to say plus. So I just want to encourage the Board to examine this issue of guns in the schools and find a way that the gun will not get through the front door before anything can happen. I know that there's some examples of gun prevention in other counties, and maybe that's a good place to start, to examine what we can do in Wake County. Yes, she actually did say everything I was going to say, which she usually does. But thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to be here too. Thank you.
This concludes public comment. Thank you all for coming and speaking. At this point, we will move on to our Superintendent updates. Superintendent Moore takes the time to share what was said in the work session. In case anyone's interested, they can go back and watch on our YouTube channel.
Thank you, Chairman Haffey. The Board covered three items during today's work session, beginning with additional budget work session as you prepare to adopt the Board's budget to provide to the county commissioners. Board members had additional questions that staff provided some responses to. Some clarifications were made in terms of the process, understanding the additional work session that the commissioners will have on May 22nd. That will be the final opportunity for staff and Board members who are interested to answer questions specifically to the county commissioners. We also talked about the fact that the county manager did reveal his budget proposal to the commissioners yesterday. So now the budget, quite frankly, is in the hands of the Board and the commissioners as we move forward. The second item, then you will have the budget proposal this evening for approval on the agenda. The second item on the work session was the initial planning discussion for the assignment plan for 2023-2024. As has been the practice of staff, they would bring in the spring the areas that they are considering, the priorities. They did provide the seven year sort of outlook that included the last couple of years and the next five years so that we could emphasize the fact that while the staff bring a one year plan at a time, it is a multi-year process that is considered when that plan is brought. Of significance also is the number of community sessions that are being held in the spring that have already started so that families who could potentially be impacted by the plan are notified, and there are opportunities for them to engage in discussion and provide feedback. It was left open at the end of the meeting after everything was reviewed. If there are additional questions of the Board or things that you want to have answers to or make sure are included or reviewed by staff, to please do so as they will begin working to gather, to synthesize all of the feedback they get from you, as well as in the community groups, to prepare draft one that will come to the Board late August, early September. The third item in the work session today was a continuation of the discussion the Board has been having for a while now around K-12 bell schedules. We started that discussion pre-pandemic. We're sort of interrupted by the pandemic, have picked it back up again. This really is about looking at the research around start times in schools and adolescents, the current three tier system that the system currently operates in order to get our children to school. And today's session included an opportunity to review feedback from focus groups that have been held with students, with teachers, a large survey that went out with, I think it was 12,000, more than 12,000 respondents, which is really pretty good for us in terms of when we send something out, and just reviewing that feedback. And you know, what we found is that, you know, on the one side, academically, people believe that flipping some bell schedules would be helpful for things that are happening inside the school day. For everything that's happening outside the school day, it seemed to be the reverse. The keeping it the way it is now is preferable for the things that happen outside the school day. So all that to say, there is still work before us. So the Board ended that with asking staff to continue to maybe review what some other districts are doing in particular that have three tier systems like we do. It's not common, but there are some others that may have engaged in a change or not and why, to potentially look at a pilot that might involve a smaller number of schools as we move forward, but generally to agree that it likely would not be something that would be in place for the 24, 25 school year, but after that, as we would need to build a long runway for families and communities for any changes. That was the work session from today.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. And again, that's available on our YouTube channel from today's work session. At this point, we'll take a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right, the motion passes. We now move on to our action item. First, coming out of Finance, waiver of Board Policy 8101 for approval of the proposed 2023-2024 budget. Mr. Neder.
Good evening, Chairman Haffey, members of the Board and Superintendent Moore. At your April 11, 2023 board meeting, the Superintendent and staff presented the Superintendent's proposed 2023-2024 budget. That proposed budget invests $25.2 million of fund balance to balance the overall budget. The $25.2 million investment of fund balance is more than the threshold set in Board Policy 8101. Board Policy 8101 directs that the Board will not use more than 50% of its unassigned fund balance to balance the future year's budget. And the unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2022 is $46.5 million. The investment of $25.2 million in fund balance represents 54% of the June 30, 2022 unassigned number. As a result, staff is requesting Board waive this component of their policy 8101 so the Board can move forward in considering approval of the Board's proposed budget for '23-24. Staff has carefully reviewed this, and we are comfortable in recommending it to the Board. Waivers of this policy have been made in the past for the same reason. I now ask the Board's consideration of approval of waiving this component of Board Policy 8101.
All right.
Chairman, I just was going to say I move that we waive Policy 8101.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Any comments, discussion, questions for Mr. Neder? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this waiver of Board Policy 8101, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. All right, moving on to approval of the Board of Education's proposed budget.
Thank you. After the presentation of the Superintendent's proposed budget to the Board on April 11th, the Board has conducted the following activities. They've asked questions about the proposed budget and received staff responses. The Board has conducted two separate budget work sessions. The Board conducted a public hearing last week during the board meeting. And the Board has also received over 44 pages of public input that was provided through an online forum. That said, much uncertainty exists and will remain into the unforeseeable future as we wait to see the final Wake County budget and the final state legislative budget. The proposed budget includes several funding priorities that are part of a multi-year initiative. And those priority areas include compensation increases for our staff to acknowledge we value their work and help us become more competitive in our capacity to recruit and retain viable employees. The proposed budget includes raising our beginning starting hourly rate for support staff to $17 per hour and requesting over $25 million of additional local funding for increasing overall compensation for staff. This is not where we need to be, but it is a step in the right direction as we have been able to make over the past several years. The proposed budget includes expansion of behavioral health support resources for students and families so they will have access to social workers, counselors, school psychologists, and related support staff. And specifically, the proposed budget has a $2 million request for additional local funding to increase the number of school-based counselors. The proposed budget requests an additional $12.6 million of local funding as we begin our move through the fiscal transition and sunsetting of federal pandemic relief funds. This will allow us to maintain the increased level of funding for maintenance and This will allow us to maintain the increased level of funding for maintenance and operations for our school facilities, as well as to maintain the increased levels of instructional support technicians to support what now has become a one-to-one student-to-student device ratio in the district. The proposed budget also includes funding requests to support the opening of a new early learning center to serve the increasing number of pre-K special needs students, additional school-based preschool special education teacher positions, and additional special education instructional assistance to serve in 10 new regional program classrooms. The proposed budget also includes additional local funds. We are required to pay charter schools and meet increase in additional $4 million. While this funding is a request from the school board to the county, the funding itself will not be available for Wake County students. It will flow to the charter schools. This is required of us by the state. These priority areas and initiatives and others are the basis of requesting an increase of $55.8 million in county appropriation from the county. Of that almost $56 million request, almost half, 46%, is associated with improving staff compensation. The board has now waived board policy 8101, allowing to invest more than 50% of the prior years' unassigned fund balance into the proposed budget. Staff is available tonight to answer any remaining additional questions, and then we will ask your consideration of approval of what will become the board's proposed 2023-2024 budget.
All right. At this time, is there a motion to approve the Board of Education's proposed budget for 2023-2024?
Chairman Haffey.
I move adoption of the superintendent's proposed budget.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there questions, comments? I first want to take a moment and thank staff for putting this together and Superintendent Moore. I know this is not easy. I know we all are aware of the needs that remain in our district, and this will not fix them all. And thank you, Mr. Neder, for addressing that. I also want to thank our board members for, this is a new thing for many of you sitting at this table. It is a difficult process, and we heard over and over that this process remains up in the air as we wait to hear back from the county commission, as we wait to hear back from the general assembly, not knowing when their budget will be approved. And I know that this is not an easy task. It's a complex task, and I thank you all for your dedication to this process. Mr. Swanson.
Thank you, Chairman Haffey. I also wanted to say thank you to Superintendent Moore and Mr. Neder and staff for putting this together, answering all of our questions. And a few things I just wanted to clear up, and I hate that our good friends left that was talking about teacher compensation because we don't control teacher pay. We control the local supplement, but the state, the North Carolina Journal Assembly sets forth the teacher pay. Only thing we can do is advocate to increase the local supplemental pay for that, you know, trying to divert funds from offices to teachers. We can't do that. That's not necessarily legal. I just wanted to clear that up, number one. Number two, you know, the Journal Assembly has a constitutional mandate to fund our schools. It's not the county commissioner. We're very grateful for the county commissioners that have been very generous to this district, but it's not the Journal, it's the Journal Assembly. And it is past time, I would quote Lizzo, but I don't want to, well, it is, I'll quote Lizzo, it's about damn time that they actually do what is best. So I want to thank you all, and I think this is an opportunity, and again, it doesn't, it does not go, it does not meet all the needs that we, that we have expressed, but it does do what's best. And, you know, I look forward to having conversations with county commissioners and whatnot, we express our needs because we can't recruit businesses to this county if we do not have a strong and thriving school system. And having a strong, thriving school system means having teachers in the building. It means having child nutrition workers, having bus drivers. That, to me, is a thriving school system that we have, that we can do more. But again, the bug starts and it falls at the Journal Assembly. So those folks that are listening, call your damn legislators and tell them to get off the bug and do what's best for our kids because we can't do what's best when we do not have the capacity. And school safety is a big piece, but it also means having our kids safe means having no vacancies. And right now, we have vacancies up and down. It's because we have a state legislator that is not following their constitutional duty. All of us have a constitutional duty that we swore and we're upholding, which is passing a budget, and it is hiring a superintendent. Those are two pieces, three, two pieces. But we got to get the Journal Assembly to work with us and stop passing legislation that, that is smoking mirrors against what the real issues are. And the real issues are is recruiting and retaining our teachers, not culture wars, not whatever's happening in folks' bedrooms, and not the books. It is getting folks in the classroom to make sure that we have folks to teach what's in the books, not the other stuff. So thank you again, and I'm going to get off my soapbox.
All right. Anyone else? Dr. Ing and then, okay.
Well, thank you so much for this, all the hard work for preparing this budget. And, you know, I, and I mentioned it in the meeting earlier, you know, I go into it as kind of, you know, it's a sobering thought about what we're, what we're having to pass. And I go into it reluctantly, simply because, I mean, I do appreciate the need to pay our staff, especially our teachers, a better wage. At the same time, I do have, I understand realistically, you know, the budget that we have proposed, we know, we're still probably going to have to make some difficult decisions to, to cut certain spending. And that's, I am prepared to do that, and looking at what is necessary to, to keep our teachers teaching their, you know, their students and to make sure that we, the teachers, the students get a great education. Now, you know, a lot of the factors that have come into play in our society, you know, there's, there's faults on both sides, you know, and, and, you know, the things that have happened in our society because of COVID and, and the, the people not wanting to work and then having to incentivize people to, to work, you know, in everyday jobs has caused this kind of rippling effect on wages, you know. And, and I do want to have, make sure that we acknowledge that people who have put in the, you know, years of education to try to teach the kids will, should be well compensated, better compensated compared to people who did not get that kind of education. You know, and it's just, it's, it's sober, like I said, to have to realize that, that we have to make these hard decisions. So thank you.
Ms. Caulfield.
So first, I want to say thank you for putting everything together. I know it is tedious, and I do not want to be in your shoes. There is a lot that goes into this as we're trying to digest the five new people that are here. And I do have a couple of questions. And while I recognize that the general assembly and legislation really does affect how we operate, I think that we still, as a board, have a responsibility to where and how we are delegating and allocating our funds. So I don't think it is just in the general assembly. Yes, we do start there. There's no doubt about that, that we start there. But it is important that we reflect on all these numbers, our resources, and what we need for our children and our students. So with that, I do believe that we do need to be competitive with the teachers and the bus drivers, you know, the children nutrition services, everything that's out there. We do need to improve that. So I appreciate you breaking down the different ways that we receive all of our money and what that looks like to us and how we can try and look a little deeper into what can we do with that. I know you guys work endlessly on that, and as you've stated, all year long. So I do appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions in regards, and these are questions that I had received. I know we got lots of really good questions and comments and feedback from the public. When it comes to our banded staff, I know that we've broken down our teachers and our bus drivers and occupational therapists and so on. Where does that, the state doesn't determine that, correct? We have the flexibility with those positions, do we not?
We have flexibility within setting the ranges. Many of those positions do have state funding underneath them as well. And so the amount of state funding we receive will influence how much we can afford to pay them and where we set the band.
And then my next part is just to clarify, I think, for me, for everything we talked about, and also for the public, when it comes to the fact that we're talking about our teachers and occupational therapists and, you know, all those positions in all the different levels, the state does determine, but the state and local are the only source of funds. We can't actually add more into that? Or we don't have the resources to do that?
Well, our, our instructional staff, as Mr. Swanson said, most of them are funded using state funds, and then we put local funds on top of that as a supplement, as many, if not most, districts do in the state to compete. But the state sets the state base, and similar for school administrators, the state sets the school administrator base. There are some grant-funded teaching positions, perhaps. Most of them are state-funded, and then some are locally funded, where the locally funded teaching positions would come based on the individual teacher's credentials, whether they have a master's degree, master's degree, national board certification. They'll fall on the same schedule, but they'll use local funds to pay the state base amount and then also local funds to pay the local supplement.
Okay. Thank you. And as far as the budget and as we reflect on it, I do, I do agree with the comment that we received today, that it is kind of hard with the, without having line by line. But I do recognize that we have to really, we're asking the county commissioners, we're hopefully in projecting what the household, you know, what the, what state funds will be. So it's really kind of hard to just balance and digest all of that and what we're actually looking at. So I want the public to understand that it is kind of, it's not just, it's not just looking at the numbers that we have in front of us. We're trying to really project and then figure out what our flexibilities will be later. And I don't agree that just adding more money will fix all of our, our band-aids. It's more about how we put things into the right places and do the right things with it. It's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot of, you know, decisions, like this book in itself doesn't list a lot of things. We all had a lot of questions, but a lot of it went into just summarizing in that book. So it is very complex. So I appreciate all your time and effort.
Ms. Waters.
Thank you, Chairman Haffey and Mr. Neder, Ms. Kimsey, Superintendent Moore, and all staff who worked on the budget. This is an incredible document. I'm the grandchild of a bus driver, and I'm a product of Wake County Schools. My children go to school in this district, and I am really an advocate for compensating our educators, our teachers, our subject matter experts. They pour into our children every day. They don't just do their job when they're in their school building. They do it on nights and on weekends. They give so much of themselves. Our bus drivers are there in the earliest hours of the day. And so I appreciate you forwarding compensation in this budget, and I don't think it's too much to ask for compensation for the work that our staff does every single day. This is an investment in our children and our future, and I don't think you can ever put a dollar amount on it, but we have to because of the way the budget works. And so I think it tells the story of a commitment to our students and to our educators that we have this ask. And I know there is work, and this is a bold ask, and I think that our, our educators are worth it. So I appreciate the work that has gone into it. So thank you.
Mr. Hagerty.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neder, I know as we've gone through the budget process, you've explained some things to us in different meetings, you've explained some things to us in prior year's budgets, but sometimes as we talk about these issues before the public, some questions just keep coming back up. So I'd like to ask you a few questions that you may have explained to me once before, but if you would humor me, I'd appreciate you explaining them again. One thing that comes out a lot is that when people hear the size of our budget, it is a large, it is a large dollar figure. And so there's an assumption when they see what teachers are paid, well, where does all the rest of the money go? And so oftentimes, we get questions about administrators and administrator pay. And Ms. Caulfield was asking, like, where we set these, these rates, where this comes from? Have we ever conducted an audit or ever looked at comparative studies about what we pay our administrators?
We have. We have done market studies, formal market studies done by a third independent party. We also regularly reach out to other districts, both in-state, most frequently in-state, but also out-of-state, because again, both in-state and out-of-state, we're competing for some of the same people. And we consistently find ourselves below. Charlotte Mecklenburg is just one example. But to answer your question, yes, we do. And to perhaps just share one more thought, yes, it is a very large budget, no question, over $2 billion. But that said, one of the items that clearly is shown in the introduction to the proposed budget document, which is online for the public to see, that the schools get directly 88% of the funding, another 4% supports our transportation operations, child nutrition programs, maintenance and operations, utilities. The charter schools get 3% of our overall operating budget. And if one looks at it in terms of just the local budget, because the state gives the charter schools the portion of state and federal funds directly, they do not flow through Wake County. It's only the local funds. So if one looks at it in terms of, well, how much money comes to us from Wake County and goes to the charters, it's closer to between 8 and 9%. So almost a tenth of what we receive from the county does not directly serve and support Wake County public school system students. And then finally, if you look at the entire budgets, not just staff, not just administrators, we've got a lot of support staff that do our accounting, staff that support Ms. Kimsey in documenting this. There are over 300,000 separate accounts that we have that were required by the state of North Carolina to maintain, and each one of those accounts has budget, has expenditures, has encumbrances, and has available or unused balances. And then finally, between the Board of Education, the Superintendent's Office, Communications, the Chief of Staff, and Strategic Plannings, Chief of Schools, our academic advancement, our administrative services, which includes our accounting, finance, payroll, human resources, and our technology services group, which supports the entire infrastructure for the district, both centrally and every one of our almost 200 schools, those make up, if I'm looking at it correctly, 5% of the overall operating budget. And that 5% is much more than just administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Neder. And I do want to kind of bring the focus back to just that whole comparison. So looking at other competing school districts, you're finding that even though we're the largest school district and, you know, for example, like our principals, we're not even looking at central office staff, but even school-based staff, our principals are paid on a state scale, is that right? With some supplement?
They are based on a state scale. We do have local funding as well.
But do, but don't our principals, like, aren't our high schools much, much larger than high schools in other districts across North Carolina in terms of the number of students? I saw some of the pay scales we're looking at, you know, like the max rate was what, like 1,500 students? And we have schools with 2,400, 2,600 and higher.
And I think that will vary from county to county, certainly in a smaller county where they may have just one high school or a couple of high schools.
And, and so the point also, then you've looked at other school districts, have you looked at? Have you looked at our staff, our non-certified staff, and how their pay compares to the private sector and private sector opportunities?
We have done that also, both through a formal third-party review. I was just talking with Dr. Matilla within the last week or two, and we were getting ready to release an RFP to do another market study, and the pandemic came down upon us. But we will be coming back to the board at some point in the very near future with our proposal to release another market study for our classified support staff.
Okay. So I guess just the final, the final point that I'm trying to make is, in your professional opinion, based on objective data compared to other school systems in the private sector, do you think that we have excessive amounts paid for administration?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson-Hossler?
Thank you. And again, I echo the appreciation to you, Ms. Kimsey, Ms. Posey, everyone who's remotely touched all of this, especially answering our questions at sometimes the 11th hour. But most importantly, as, this is my first time chairing our Finance Committee, and it has been extremely important and appreciative that you are, and your staff have taken the time to walk us through that, and we have more lessons learned on how to get better and better with ensuring board members are able to capture and digest and actually hold. Because some years I digest and still forget the next year because it is extremely, not just complicated, but it's nuanced. And as most budgets are, even my home budget, which is not even a modicum of this, just because they're always moving pieces. So thank you for all the work that you've done. My colleagues have certainly said the yeoman of what I would absolutely echo, but I do think it's important that our public not just hear where the responsibility lies, because it does lie at the feet of every one of us who have decision-making power and taxation power and funding distribution power. So that's, that's almost all of the elected bodies. I do think that what you've heard our colleagues speak to is where each of our roles are, very similarly to how we spend our money. And so if there's anything that I would say to the public about the confusion of the budget, is acknowledging that everybody has a different role in this. So if you think about it, we make the first decision for our budget, but we actually, of course, has the least amount of authority of how we get the money. The federal government starts out, they appropriate money across this country, they often, their fiscal year isn't even ours. So we're lucky if they pass a budget on a continuation by October, November, or sometimes December every year. And so we don't know their budget. The state, very similarly, the same thing. And then our county commissioners, at the end of the day, as all of our colleagues have acknowledged, are picking up the puzzle pieces for us. And I think that also has to be acknowledged, and acknowledging that the county does take up a lot of the slack where our state doesn't. And certainly, I would say for my now 10th year on this board, every year I'm able to walk away saying we did the best that we can with the resources and puzzle pieces that we had. That doesn't mean we get it right. We certainly acknowledge that not paying a living wage, when we certainly know, and I, all of us have said multiple times, that the people who touch our kids first and more frequently outside of their teachers and their parents are our classified staff. And I'd be remiss if I didn't join the course in stating, we acknowledge that this is a difficult decision, and it's a decision that personally I think most of us are making under duress, knowing the ask that we're asking. Because when we ask the county commissioners, we're asking the public to support us. And so, again, when we say to the public that as much as you come to us and go to the General Assembly and the county commissioners, every ask we make is a public ask. We're a public school system, and every person, hopefully, they may not have this sticker that says, "I love public schools," but hopefully they understand the reason public schools exist and why it's our job at this table to continue to make our public schools the best school for all of our students. Those who don't have a choice but to attend our schools because they don't have access resources, and those who choose to come because it's the right thing to do to enhance all of our students. And so if there's nothing else I can say, whether you're asking for a line item budget, which you can get in our audit book, which is also located on our website. So we do do our due diligence. We are a fiscally responsible body. But also reminding each person in the public that this is your public school, whether you support us or not, and we hope that you choose to support us by acknowledging that there is no dollar amount that we could put on our classified staff or our educators, but indeed, we can acknowledge the gross amount of work that they do in the grossly way that they're underpaid. And so hopefully, our public will support our public schools, even if they aren't touting how much they love our public schools.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Hossler. Further comments or questions, Ms. Edmonds?
Thank you. I just pulled up our finances webpage, or the, yeah, on our website under About Us, and I am looking at the numerous audit reports every year, going back to 2007. Also, our adopted budget archives. There's a phone number I see here for folks that have trouble accessing the information that they're looking for. But Mr. Neder, could you please speak to the audits that are done and our, you know, results that we've received over X number of years?
Yes, certainly, Ms. Edmonds. We are required statutorily to have an independent external audit annually by CPA firm. And we have had, and those audits are to ensure the accuracy of the financial statements. There's some other aspects of the audit as well, but the primary purpose is to ensure the accuracy of the financial statements. And we had clean, what are called unqualified reports, which is a clean report with no findings, need Mr. Winters back here, I believe, in over 10 years. And even prior to that, when there were some minor findings, there were minor findings.
Thank you. And if I may, those are presented to us the fall of every year. I believe the one for fiscal year 2022 was given to us in October, and that does take place at one of our open meetings, and the public, you know, can listen in and watch those presentations and access the documents. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. And I would just add that the board also has something unique in that you have, in addition to the audit firm coming in, and that is required, all LEAs in the state are required to have that. The board has an independent audit committee made of, again, people independent of the Wake County Public School System. These are generally people with either accounting or business background. The current makeup of the audit committee, I believe there is at least one attorney, possibly two attorneys. And this independent group's role is to, separate from myself and our staff, look at the results of the independent financial audit and advise the board as to the results of it. And the chair of that committee comes in, along with the independent auditors, to present the audit findings each year. And the other role that that board serves is to advise this board on selection of an independent audit firm. So again, that's not coming directly from staff to this board.
And through that, we learned there are about nine different audits that happen annually throughout, not just this larger audit. It really is a large piece. All right. At this time, are there any further comments, questions, concerns? All right. We have a motion in a second, all in favor of approving the Board of Education's proposed budget for the year 2023-2024. Please signify with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. All right. The budget passes.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. At this point, we move on to the policy portion of the evening, starting with Board Policy 3200, Selection of Instructional Materials. This is first reading. Joining us will be Drew Cook, along with Michelle Woodson, Allison Reed, Kendra Allen, and Dr. Julie Crane. Mr. Cook?
Good evening, Chairman Haffey, Vice Chair Hagerty, Superintendent Moore, and board members. The first of several updated policies being brought forward for first reading this evening is Policy 3200, Selection of Instructional Materials. With final board approval, it will replace the current Policy 3200, which has been in place since 2017. Over several months, the revision process has been a collaborative effort involving technology services, which includes digital learning and libraries, academics, including our curriculum development team and others. The draft policy was reviewed with the Superintendent's Leadership Team on April the 10th, and then by the Policy Committee on April the 18th. I will note that, as is often the case with policy revisions, there has been a variety of diverse thoughts and perspectives expressed and considered throughout the process, including at the Policy Committee table a couple of weeks ago. But ultimately, we do believe that the updated policy as drafted accomplishes the overarching goals of both increasing clarity and transparency in the processes involved in instructional resource selection at the district, school, and classroom levels, while also strengthening systemic consistency in district-wide implementation of the policy and related practices. You'll recall that staff is also working on revisions in parallel to Policy 3210, parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials, which will be discussed and reviewed further at the next Policy Committee meeting later this month. As always, we've worked to make appropriate connections to and align with other applicable board policies that are relevant here, including Policy 1150 Equity, 3100 Curriculum Development, and also Policy 3432 Professional Learning Communities, a key component of which is focused on the selection of curriculum materials that promote student learning across developmental levels and grade levels. Again, for ease of reference, revised or new language is in blue in the revised draft that you see. Green is existing language that has been moved or reordered in the policy. So with that, quick context, some of the key revisions that we do want to highlight include the addition of language to elevate and better emphasize the critical importance of parent-school-community partnerships in the instructional process. This language, we'll point out, is similar to references in other current board policies and is also aligned with the ongoing work of the district to implement a comprehensive curriculum implementation and review cycle, which the board reviewed and discussed back in October of 2022. In Section A on the principles governing the selection of instructional materials, we'll note that 1D has been revised to read, quote, "Instructional material should also be appropriate for the age, maturity, and grade levels and abilities of the students and address a spectrum of learning styles and not be pervasively vulgar," end quote. As we discussed in Policy Committee, this incorporates language from applicable state statute and available case law directly into the policy to ensure explicit alignment and clarity. New language has also been incorporated into Section A 3 to outline additional governing principles to be used when selecting passages or texts for classroom read-alouts. In Sections B, C, and D, on core supplemental and school library materials, a statement has been added to make clear that selection teams, whether at the school or district level, always have the ability and discretion to review or revisit the selection of any material any time to determine whether or not to keep, remove, or modify the material based on those governing principles outlined in Section A. I'll note that this discretion and ability exists now, but we believe, again, it is helpful to explicitly call this out in the revised policy. The revised language in Sections B, C, and D is also intended to strike a balance between providing clear and consistent parameters for schools and staff to work within, while at the same time ensuring the necessary level of professional discretion and flexibility is available in order to feasibly design, development, or, excuse me, develop, select, and implement literally thousands of supplemental resources, instructional materials, and classroom activities every single day. The updated language also elevates the importance of team-based decisions and collective agency as best practice in selection processes. That's a quick rundown of a few of the more significant changes and revisions to the revised Policy 3200 that were discussed on April the 18th. I do want to also quickly point out a couple of revisions made since the 18th, in addition to one revision that we're going to suggest that's not yet reflected in the updated draft that's been uploaded. First, all previous references to parents have been changed to parents slash guardians, per feedback at the Policy Committee table. The phrase "and representation" has been added after the word "viewpoints" in Section A under 1G and 2E. I think that came from Ms. Edmonds. Thank you. And then in the second paragraph of both Sections C and D, the phrase to, quote, "Temporarily discontinue the use of a particular material," end quote, has been deleted so that the last sentence now simply reads, quote, "The principal retains the authority to refer the material to the appropriate selection team for reconsideration," end quote. The rationale for that adjustment is to avoid any potential confusion by keeping perceived references to the challenge process contained solely in Policy 3210. Since 3200, as we've discussed, is focused on the initial and ongoing selection processes rather than the formal challenge process. To that end, upon some additional review and consultation, including with Mr. Blumberg, we would like to recommend for the board's consideration this evening, one additional revision to that same paragraph in Sections C and D. Of the final sentence in the second paragraph, we'd like to propose adding a sentence that states, quote, "Nothing in this policy removes the principal's authority as the school's budget manager to approve or deny expenditures," end quote. As many of you know, this is already generally understood to be the case in current practice, but this is another example of where we believe it is important for the policy to be more clear in order to minimize any potential confusion or uncertainty. We'll note also, as an alternative to the addition of that one statement in two different places, another option that we might suggest is to add as a number four under Section A, under the principal section, we could simply make that statement one time that would then clearly be applicable throughout the entirety of the policy. So that's another suggestion with that same statement that we just wanted to draw your attention to, that we've revised just in the last couple of days. So staff is requesting board approval on first read, and of course, we're happy to respond to any questions or provide additional information as needed.
All right. Thank you.
Just, I'll jump in really quickly on the number of the options on it. I would support the more concise version of just adding it one time about the principal still has the authority as budget manager.
We figured you guys were talking and aligned in that.
Yeah. Thanks.
So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook, and thank you, everyone, for making those changes that were discussed in policy. Is there a motion to approve Board Policy 3200 for first reading?
So moved.
Second. All right. Any discussion? I guess, yes, Ms. Johnson-Hossler?
Thank you. I'm sure there's quite a bit of discussion, but first, also my first time chairing policy, so thank you for the staff, for pulling together everything, even these last changes that you've gotten from board members. I also want to thank our board members. It's not often that a board is bold enough to take on policy that is really in the thick of things publicly. We usually, we, the collective across the country, generally wait till things die down. But I'd be remiss as chair if I didn't acknowledge that we have a board who's willing to talk about the difficult subject as an acknowledgement to the constituent request on both sides, regardless of what people think about it, that this board was brave enough to take this on, and also digging very deep and saying, we're not just going to pass it, but we are going to talk about it. We're going to be open to the feedback that we get and recognize that generally, it's much easier for us to get a policy through, and I acknowledge that this one may take a few iterations, because I think there will be ongoing public conversation, but also acknowledging that policy is a living, breathing document, and this is an example of the staff being responsive to both our request as board members, but also the request of the public, that we actually build out clear guidance and language. And thank you to my colleagues who noted that we can also streamline this, because staff, you all really, really went to the nuts and bolts on this one. And so thank you to our colleagues who came up with ways to streamline a policy that is indeed, as I say, we're the red bookmakers at this board in addition to our budget. It's how we guide our public, and I think that this is yet another way that we're speaking into how we want to be seen and how we want to govern as a board. So thank you to the staff, but also to my colleagues.
Thank you.
Is there any suggestions on whether we mention the principal's authority one time versus two times?
Chairman Haffey, how would you, how would you like, would you like that as an amendment, or is it just a suggestion, or procedurally?
I read it as a suggestion, but I'm looking to our attorney.
I heard, to tell me if I'm wrong, Drew, I heard that his final recommendation, but I'm reading into it, was to say it once, and so I took them.
Oh, I took that as the motion.
That's, and I, and I thought that was the motion.
Great. I'm just making sure that we are.
Thumbs up on that? Okay. I took it as the motion as just once.
Excellent.
Okay. I will second whether it was board member Blumberg or board member.
I will.
Whichever one, I wholeheartedly support the idea.
Or if a board member.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that for me. And so are there any other questions or comments at this time? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of passing Board Policy 3200, Selection of Instructional Materials on first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. All right. Moving on to Board Policy. Thank you. Board Policy 4003, Language Assistance for Families, first reading. And we have Ms. Lisa Luton, our Chief Communications Officer.
Good evening, all.
Good evening, all. Tonight I bring Policy 4003, Language Assistance for Families, for first read. We appreciate that the Policy Committee asked staff to bring this policy for discussion. We have a better policy as a result. The revisions include a new title and an additional statement in the first paragraph that communicates the district's commitment to provide language assistance to families. We reviewed this with the Policy Committee on March 28th and April 18th, and tonight we request board's approval of the first reading of Policy 4003, Language Assistance for Families.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt Board Policy 4003 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Okay. Ms. Ed?
Thank you. I want to reiterate your thanks of staff, and this is also for Policy 3200. We had, you know, quite a workout on both of these, and so thank you for all of that work. With the Language Assistance Policy 4003, I wanted to ask you to please, I actually went back and watched the meeting again, if you could talk about the Language Assistance Plan that we use, our staff uses, and the difference between that, because we are moving forward with an RNP, and again, after having reviewed the meeting today, because that's a more digestible document, but that those things go together. Can you please speak a little bit about that?
Yeah. So the Language Assistance Plan is a document that was created many years ago as the result of a resolution with the Office of Civil Rights. So that plan, the district, thanks to Superintendent Moore, took advantage of to make sure that we had a comprehensive plan for making sure that we serve all families who speak languages other than English. The plan details both what we will do, the services we will provide, how we will measure our effectiveness in those services, and how we work together as an organization to implement those services. So as discussed in the work session or in the committee, one of the things that we'll do as a result of this is both make an RNP that details out those requirements, and then also do, like we always do, an annual review of the plan to make sure that we're implementing it to fidelity.
Mr. Hershey?
And just as a follow-up, that plan will be linked to, you can, to the R and D or to the policy itself?
Yeah. That is a good suggestion and something that we will do, make the plan accessible for families online, in English, and in other languages.
And I want to thank our policy chair for bringing this policy up and providing an opportunity for us board members to suggest policies to be brought up, so thank you for that.
Ms. Johnson-Husler?
Thank you. Yet another great recommendation by our board members to bring these policies up. And also for me, a reminder to, the district has a lot of rich history that everyone, especially with five new board members, isn't aware of, and so the lesson for me here is we pulled out something that has been in place, oh my gosh, almost 10 years now, but that every board member nor community member was aware existed, and this board, I believe at this point, was able to make it more accessible, more digestible, but also lifting out what do some of these words really mean and what would make everything more accessible to parents, especially when we use broad terms like important or pertinent, and really recognizing that that has very different definitions and meanings for people. So again, thank you, and thank you for making it available, and an acknowledgement to staff that with five new board members, that is a benefit, will pull things up that we haven't talked about in a long time. And times change, certainly the climate has changed, and this is one that I think is necessary and necessitates our efforts and energy in this climate to acknowledge all parental rights and access to our information. So thank you.
Seeing no other hands raised at this time, all those in favor of passing Board Policy 4003, Language Assistance for Families, for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right. The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Luton.
Thank you.
Next up, we go to Board Policy 4220, Student Accident and Catastrophic Insurance Programs for First Reading, and we are joined by Ms. Trish Posey and Mr. Cecil Bell.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Haffey, members of the board, and Superintendent Moore. This evening, we bring to you the first reading of the Board Policy 4220, Student Accident and Catastrophic Insurance Programs. We reviewed this with you on April 18th in Policy Committee. The revisions you suggested were incorporated. We developed this alongside with the NC School Board Association, our staff, and legal representation. So what you see in the revisions, we revised the title, and we also revised the language describing accident and catastrophic insurance offerings required by statute. So we would ask for approval of first reading.
Okay.
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
And I won't repeat this for the next one. Another example of working in tandem with the School Boards Association, who has very good intentions, well-intended, and I believe that the Wake County Board of Education is adding great substance and rich dialogue as a result, that I hope we are sharing this back to the School Boards Association, because our board members asked some really great questions. I'm sure Mr. Bell can probably agree. We were asking him to quote policy that he did not have handled, but he looks really ready this evening for questions. But I just wanted to note that to the public is, yes, while we're doing this in tandem, migrating our policies, that our board is truly not just accepting these policies, but making them very clear and specific to Wake County public school students and families.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Any other? All right. Seeing none, all those. Yes, sir?
Just to that point.
I do need to let our policy chair know.
Oops. I do need to let our policy chair know. Talking with the staff that develops the policies at the North Carolina School Board Association, they love and appreciate all of the fine work, and they endorse our ability to go through and tailor, so it is noted and it is appreciated.
Wonderful to hear that feedback after so many years. Thank you. All right. All those in favor of adopting, or sorry, approving Board Policy 4220, Student Accident and Catastrophic Insurance Programs on first reading, please signify by a sign of aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are moving on to Board Policy 6524, Network Security, for first reading. And we are joined by Allison Reed, our interim chief technology officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Haffey, Superintendent Moore, and members of the board. Our last policy for this evening is 6524, which is on network security. This is a new policy for us here in Wake, and is part of the North Carolina School Boards Association, policies to lead schools manuals, and adopting it for us tonight, or adopting it for us as part of our policy manual, as part of the policy migration project. The language in this policy describes our efforts to provide security for computers, networks, and other technological resources. Know that while this policy does not replace a current policy that we have in place, we do already have measures in place that address security to our network and to our users. We reviewed this policy with you on April 18th at the Policy Committee meeting, and tonight we bring it to you and request your approval of first reading.
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Ms. Johnson-Husler? You've already said it. All right. Excellent. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Reed, for recognizing in your comments that we already work on network security quite heavily, but this policy just cements that practice into policy, and so thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All those in favor of approving Board Policy 6524, Network Security, for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to return to closed session for reasons previously stated during the work session.
So moved.
So.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right. We are now in closed session. Thank you.